I'd like to welcome you all here. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. And before we begin, I'd like to invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Lawson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this wonderful day you've given us. Lord, I pray and thank you for the fall colors and the weather that we're experiencing as we speak. I pray and thank you for this city and the opportunity to serve, and that you'll be with us tonight as we have decisions before us, and it'll be in the best interest of all. And in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. All right. Again, would like to welcome everyone to tonight's regular meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. We do have large print, yeah, Wyman's holding them up over there, large print versions of the agenda, if that would be helpful to anyone. And all that said, I'm going to ask our city clerk Denise Pierce to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Jim Reed?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rick Evans?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Kathy Jacobs?
Here.
Ernest Cade?
Here.
All right, thank you. And before we move to comments from our citizens, we'll look at item four on the agenda tonight. And I'd like to recognize the, our 2020 Complete Count Committee for the 2020 census. And I'm going to ask Catherine Burkhead, Chair of that committee, to come forward. And Catherine, thank you for your hard work. I will tell you that Catherine did a wonderful job of leading our committee, and our committee did a great job. And I know you're going to speak to that.
I am.
So you're, you're free to make, make your remarks.
Well, I'm going to take a few minutes, if you all don't care, because there, there's a story to tell here. We had our first meeting in February of 2019, believe it or not. That was some folks from the Census Bureau came, and a few folks from the community, some nonprofit leaders and others, had been called together to just find out what the census was about. So we did ask people to sign on to be members of our committee, and we had our first meeting in May of 2019. And it's been a process, because what we had to do, first of all, was learn what was going to be on the census, what was not going to be on the census, then why it was important for people to be counted, and then who is typically undercounted. So a lot of our early months were spent in developing our strategies for how we were going to try to reach all the people of Springdale and convince them that it was really in their best interests to respond. So it, we knew we had a task before us, and, but we had, like I say, a great committee to work on it. And so we had subcommittees developed, and they were dedicated to communicating within these different sectors. Delia Anderson, with the Economic Opportunity Agency, headed up the nonprofit sector, and she invited folks together and did an outstanding job on communicating to them why they needed to communicate to their clients about how important it was to be involved. We had a lot of city folks who came. Jeff Taylor, I don't think missed a meeting early on. Clayton Sedbury helped us with publishing the maps that we needed to have. Vernon Tarver came to represent the Parks and Rec. Ashley, when she was with the city, and also Lulu, when she was with the city, were also a huge part of these efforts. But then there were also partners beyond that. Consul Eldon Alec and Bill Rogers from the Chamber were working together early on with the involvement of Sam Abasi from the Chicago Bureau about this wonderful May Day celebration that was going to take place. Well, there. But it was wonderful to see Bill and other people from the Chamber so involved and so engaged in working with members of our community. There were a lot of folks who had responsibilities beyond Springdale, but they always made us feel like we were the favorite child. You know, Arkansas Advocates for Children and Families, Arkansas United and ACOM had, had responsibilities that went beyond Springdale, but they always, always focused on us and reinforced what a great job we were doing. We had wonderful partners, and Brandon Sherman from the Census Bureau. Asked Brandon something, he responded right away, or found the answer if he didn't know it. Stephanie Blevins from the Governor's Office was a great help. When we did one activity back in March, she got the governor to, to send us a little video to include with it. And that, you know, that wouldn't have happened without Stephanie. And so it was just great to have her. The North West Arkansas Council, once again, with Stephanie's help, got us airtime on Univision and Telemundo so that we could communicate more effectively with Spanish-speaking populations all across the region. HWA Margarita had Stephen Dillingham here last September. He's the head of the Census Bureau. So she brought him in as we were working, building up to getting their complete count. The Jones Center, Ed Clifford's answer was always yes. You know, whatever you need, yes, we will do it. So it was wonderful. And I just can't say enough good about our ACOM allies. Melissa Leyland, Michelle Pedro, and Janita. If you need anything technical, Janita is your person. She did a magnificent job, and Michelle is your idea person. They just did a phenomenal thing. We did a Zoom livestream on Facebook that had over 2,000 views. So, you know, we don't, you don't reach that many people going door to door. It was great. And Marcia Layer is here with us tonight. Marcia, if there's a prize to be given, I think it goes to Marcia, because the schools were a huge partner with almost everything we did. Marcia got Trent Jones involved. There was a March 11th program that got broadcast to every school so that the kids could be sure to emphasize to their parents how important it was for them to be counted in the census. That we were planning an event that Amelia Williams was involved with too, that would have taken place in April. Would have been great, wouldn't it? Yeah, would have been great. But Marcia had us delivering flyers with the lunch deliveries at, at the schools. Gosh, when we did that in June, can't remember when it was. But, and then also, as school was starting back up, Marcia got us at the drive-thru where the students were coming through at George Junior High to pick up their computers. She got us there once again, so that we had contact with, I can't remember how many hundred, yeah, a lot of folks that day. So it just kind of kept on going. Tammy Evans with the Springdale Public Library was a tremendous asset, working on short videos in English, Spanish, and Marshallese early on. She got posted. Matt Bagley with his Fire Department, his answer once again was always yes. You know, he was there early with the tent. He was there to take the tent down. He was there during, in the meantime, so. And you, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. You, you were at every meeting. You were always supportive. You made sure that we had what we needed from the city, and it just made a tremendous difference. And I just want to say one more thing. I don't know if you all know, that Springdale's self-response rate, we've ended at 69.9. I was so hoping we'd make 70% for self-response. The non-response follow-up will have us much higher than we've been traditionally. I don't know how much, but I'm eager to see the actual numbers that correspond to those percentages. And just so you'll know, Bentonville has a 68.4% non-self-response rate. Fayetteville has 66.4 self-response, and Rogers 71.6. So, anyway, if you have any questions, I'd love to try to answer them.
Anybody?
All I want to say is, Catherine?
Thank you.
There is no way that this could have happened without your leadership, the connections you've got in this community, and the way you have pulled it in. So, from my perspective, I'm so grateful to everybody else who works so hard. Thank you.
Let me, let me say, yeah. And Marcia, thank you. You did such a wonderful job, and the school's such an important connection through this process. And, and even, even though several events that were planned, you know, we, we were throwing curveballs, just like everybody was through this year. And this was a, you know, when, when COVID hit, you know, it, it upended everybody's world. And, and certainly, this being such an important year, because as everyone knows, the census, the results of this census, we lived with for 10 years. So, so we, but, but the committee, under Catherine's leadership, just rolled with the punches, continued to, to work hard and, and adjust. And, and Catherine, what I've heard now is that, that from the enumerator's standpoint, every residence, residential unit in Springdale has been contacted, has, they've gotten some kind of response. So there will be people counted. Like you, I don't know what those numbers are going to end up being, and none of us will know until the official count comes out. But I think, I think we have done as well as we could possibly hope. And, and I can't, I know that, that not everyone from the committee could be here tonight, but many are watching now, many can watch later. And, and I think, I think we as a, as a city council, and certainly as the mayor, need to give you all one more hand, and, and thanks and appreciation for the work you all have done. So, thank you. That is a big, big deal. And, and we are, we are certainly thankful for all those efforts and for everyone's participation in the census. All right, we are at, now at item five on our agenda. This is comments from our citizens. The council sets aside this, this portion of the agenda each meeting to hear comments from our residents concerning items that are not already on tonight's agenda. Those items, everyone will have an opportunity to speak when those items come up. But if there, we just ask that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief, and understand that the council will take no action on what you have to discuss tonight. So if there are, if there's anyone who would like to speak to the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come at this time. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, the approval of minutes. Council, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
If none, so moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Move for A and B.
All right, we have a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Harry Zaid Zero.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move to item eight. It is a hearing to appeal a planning commission decision to deny the rezoning request by Make Rich LLC for rezoning 81 of 91.5 acres on West Apple Blossom Road and North Graham Road from C2 General Commercial to I-1 Light Industrial. And I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Ernest Cade.
Thank you. The petitioners for this rezoning request have met their requirements under the ordinance to have their appeal heard before the city council tonight. And I know we're going to have lots of comment, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kelstrom.
Good evening, council. My name is Will Kelstrom, and I represent the applicant on this rezoning appeal. A little, sure.
Yeah, speak right into that.
A little bit of history to start this. The applicant requested that 81 of a total 91 acres on Apple Blossom and Graham Roads be rezoned from C2 to I-1. The applicant requested that a 300-foot strip on the eastern border be left as C2, which in addition to the 120-foot right-of-way planned for Dixieland Road would serve as a 420-foot buffer between any industrial zoning and the homes on Walden Street. At Planning Commission meeting on October 6th, the Planning Commission voted 5-3 to deny this rezoning request. My job today is not to get up here and try to sell you on approving a warehousing and distribution center that's going to bring a whole bunch of jobs to Springdale. Instead, my goal is to show you that regardless of any proposed development, this parcel is prime for a rezoning to I-1, and that the Planning Commission was in error when they made their decision. The Planning Commission, as far as I can tell, based their decision on four factors. What can be broken down as follows. One, access and infrastructure. Two, what happens if the project falls through and we're left with an I-1 zoning? What can be built? Three, the proximity of I-1 to residential and the buffering between those. And four, the future land use map. As for access and infrastructure, it was brought up that Apple Blossom and Graham wouldn't be able to hold the capacity of the traffic from their size and current condition, and that Dixieland Road is not yet finished. These are both issues that I think will be addressed by Springdale's large-scale regulations. It is my understanding that under Springdale's large-scale development regulations, Graham Road and Apple Blossom Road would be strictly reserved for emergency access and for vehicular access, such as for employees. Any truck traffic will be reserved for Dixieland Road. As for Dixieland Road, there was some concern about the timing of this project, or in other words, that it was too early, granted that the extension isn't complete yet. To start, this extension is loaded, slated to be completed by October 2021, about two years. This project would take some time to complete, and in any event, the developer would likely want to wait until this extension was done before they built or, in any event, completed this development.
Let me, let me make sure you didn't misspeak there. You said October 2021?
Yes.
I think you mean October 2022.
Yes.
Yeah, because you did say two years, but I wanted to be sure. And, and our, our timeline actually shows it completed much sooner than that.
Okay.
But in, well into 2022, anyway. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm also told that a project of this type is, could possibly open up new avenues for funding and grants for the city to further improve the Dixieland plans. In that regard, it seems that it might actually be better that Dixieland Road isn't done yet, as it gives the city a little bit more time and opportunity to plan for this kind of development. My final point on this, that I want to stress again, is that all of these access and traffic considerations, these are all large-scale development issues. There's going to have to be a traffic study done, and they'll be dealt with accordingly when a large-scale development plan is proposed. As with any rezoning that comes in connection with a proposed development, there's always a concern of what happens if the development falls through and we're left with the zoning. I want to reiterate here that we've requested an I-1 zoning, which in Springdale's code is given the title Light Industrial District. I have that code section with me here today. I'd like to list out the uses that are permitted under I-1. Trades and services, automotive services, dedicated warehousing, limited manufacturing, parking lot, temporary buildings and structures, self-supporting tower or antenna, structure or monopole, and transportation services. I'd like to point out that at least three of these are already allowed in C2, which is the current zoning. As far as I can tell, none of these are particularly noxious uses. The worst use that's potentially allowed is limited manufacturing, which is defined as industrial uses which generally, which usually generate limited environmental impact, which involve the assembly, fabrication, and packaging and processing of previously prepared materials. If anyone gets up here tonight and talks about pollution or potential plastic refineries, I just want you guys to know that's simply not true. It won't happen. This leads me to the next discussed concern. You'll see that the surrounding land to the west and south, sorry, let me back up. The next concern is the proximity of this proposed I-1 zoning to residential uses and the compatibility of the I-1 zoning in this location. If you look around this parcel, you'll see the surrounding land to the west and south is largely agricultural. Patsy, where should I point this? Skip to the next one, please. So, if you'll see, the lands to the west and the south are all agricultural. To the north, across the border in Lowell, which you can't see here, those are actually zoned either commercial or business park. Now, to the east, you'll see that it's mainly zoned C2. And I'd like to note here that of the roughly mile-long eastern border, only 789 feet actually run up to a residential zone. By the way, this is why we've requested this C2 buffer, which again, would be 420 feet. As you all know, this is how planning is done. When you have two uses that conflict or compete with each other, you put a more compatible use in between them. We've got an I-1 zone and a residential zone. What we've done is request that C2 be left in between them. Now, as for the proximity of any industrial operation to any residential uses, namely those on Walden Street, I want everyone to look at the shape of this parcel. You can see that there is a main portion on the western end, that there's a northern portion that juts up to Apple Blossom, and an eastern leg that juts over to future Dixieland. These are presumably for access. Now, I'm not going to sit here and tell you guys where proposed development's going to be, because I don't know. We don't have a large-scale plan in front of us tonight. But what I can say is that any person looking at this, you can probably guess where it's going to go, and that's on the main portion. Patsy, if you go a slide forward, one more. Now, you can barely make out on this, now this is rotated, but you can barely make out on this where the 612 bypass is going to go. But anyone looking at this can tell that any industrial or warehouse operation is probably going to go on the main portion of that parcel. It's not going to go on the northern or eastern legs. Now, that eastern leg that juts out towards Walden Street, that's 1,100 feet long. So what we're talking about here is, in all likelihood, around four football fields a distance between these residents and any industrial activity. So as a last short point, the future land use map was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting. The future land use map currently shows this as low-density residential. The map, the version of the map that shows that as low-density residential was approved in 2012. Eight years later, nothing's been built there, let alone low-density residential. Now, I actually have Springdale's future land use, land use plan with me tonight. It reads that the Comprehensive Land Use Plan is not a zoning ordinance. It is a guide to the preparation and the carrying out of the components of the planning process. It further provides that this Comprehensive Land Use Plan expresses current goals and policies that will shape the future, rather than show a rigid image of the future itself. In other words, the land use plan is just that. It's a plan. It is not, as we all know, a promise to the residents of what will be built there. So in closing, what I want to stress tonight is that this parcel, with its size, access, and proximity to major highways, and distance and buffering from conflicting uses, is prime for an I-1 zoning. What I want to stress further is that an I-1 zoning of this parcel is not only an appropriate zoning, but indeed is the highest and best zoning for this parcel. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have, as well as Bill McClard is also here. And we also have a representative from Crossland.
So I have a question. In our packet, there's a color photo of that, and then it's, it's overlaid with yellow stripes. I don't know if you have that picture or not.
I believe Patsy has it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, but, anyway, at least in, in the photo we have, you're referring to the east, what'd you call it, eastern leg?
Yes.
East leg? Okay, from the east leg, there's a, it, it jots to the south in the yellow stripes. It's not shown on what you had just showed us.
Can you bring up that Google Earth picture, Patsy, that is in the packet?
So if you're talking about that last image, that is actually rotated 90 degrees clockwise. Yes.
Yeah, that one. Actually, the one in the packet looks different from that.
I think, I think the one in the packet includes the Dixieland right-of-way. Jeff, I think that in, that leg there includes the Dixieland right-of-way.
Okay, so that little leg to the south is...
Jeff is saying that it also includes this.
Yeah.
So that's Dixieland? Okay.
There's actually a map that shows Dixieland, I believe.
Okay, so then it's from the east, east boundary then? And how far did you say would be commercial?
Commercial would be 300 feet, and the Dixieland right-of-way is 120 feet.
You just wanted her to get up.
Sure, use your microphone, Kathy, please.
That's why, as you were pointing this direction, I thought, oh.
You asked me to come without my, without my phone or anything?
My fault, I'm supposed to...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
C2 includes cultural, recreational, and health facilities, offices, studios, and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, automotive services, parking lots, transportation services, and a healthcare clinic. Those are the permitted uses in a C2. Conditional use in a C2 includes utility facilities, recycling collection facilities, self-supporting tower or antenna, church and synagogue, and a mobile vending site.
Entire piece of property is already C2, right?
It's already C2, that's correct.
Same thing.
Right. The entire 91 acres, or 90, is it 91? 91 acres is C2, yes.
Okay. Any other questions before we hear from residents or others that want to speak?
I'm basing it off of current infrastructure. It's right next to that interchange, and while they wouldn't be able to hop on 612 directly from the parcel, they could easily go down, get on Wagon Wheel, then get on the interstate, and it gives them access to 49 and 412. I suppose you're right. It is future infrastructure, because it only connects to 112 right now. So to a certain extent, yes, it is based off future infrastructure, but you can access 412 from 49. Now, one of the other reasons, again, why I say this is prime is because if you look around it, there isn't a whole lot going on besides the one neighborhood to the east, at Walden Street. It's all agricultural. And I by no means want to say that they should be disregarded, but I think of, of what I've laid out tonight shows that they're, I think their worries are addressed. I think they're going to be a good distance away from any noxious activity.
Other questions?
I didn't follow your first answer. You got Graham Road to the south, correct?
Graham Road is to the east.
Graham's to the, no, Graham's to the west.
To the west. Is there a road to the south?
Not right now.
So how, how would they access it? I didn't understand your, your explanation of the access.
So again, this would all be figured out in large scale, but presumably, they would use the Dixieland Road extension, which runs, which runs along the property to the east, which would run down to Wagon Wheel, from what I understand.
Okay.
So that, that's how they would access...
It'd be dependent on Dixieland?
Correct.
I think Brad, we're about, is it about 90% plans right now on Dixieland? Garver is currently, it's still currently under design.
And that's true, even if the bypass was built, it'd still have to go down to Wagon Wheel?
Yes, well, I believe the plans show some kind of access from Dixieland to 71, which would probably be where they would access the 612 bypass from.
Wouldn't that depend on highway department allowing access?
I think that's going to depend a little on RDOT and how they do, the possibility of frontage roads, and that kind of thing.
How many accesses they will allow.
There will be an access at, at 71B, for sure. All right. You might want to stay handy. I'm sure you will. Anyone, who's, who else would like to speak?
Excuse me, I got a little tangled up there. My name is David Gilbert. I live at 5714 Walden Street, which is about 100 feet from this project. Despite the fact that my mail comes to me from the Lowell Post Office, our subdivision has been part of Springdale within city limits for 45 years. That's when Lynn Estates was platted, so I am one of those residents in Lynn Estates. And I am not happy with the idea that our neighborhood is nothing of consequence going on. We feel it is quite consequential, because we own our homes there. And most of us, that's the only property that we own anywhere in the world, is our home. So we want to protect our homes. So we want to protect our homes. I've been a civil engineer in practice for 30 years. I spent five years of that working for a locally headquartered, large retail company. And 25 years after that, working in northwest Arkansas with numerous planning commissions and city councils, including that of Springdale. I know a little bit about zoning. And if you know anything about zoning, you understand that the purpose of having, the only reason zoning laws are even constitutional, is to protect the neighboring landowners from incompatible uses. And I think that's what we see here. Springdale, I have to correct myself. I was thinking about this this afternoon. I told the planning commission that Springdale is the only place I've ever been told that warehouses this close to single-family homes on half-acre lots was good zoning. And then I remembered Bethel Heights used to do that, too. Well, we know what we think of Bethel Heights, one way or the other. Everywhere else in the world, I'm told it's a bad idea, and that it's poor planning and poor zoning. My practice includes 150 large retail projects in 38 states, and that was just when I was doing big-box retail. So I've seen this, and I know what happens in zoning. The question you're being asked to decide tonight is not whether this is a great thing for the city of Springdale. It's not whether the proposed big fish that they want you to think they have on the hook would be wonderful and create lots of jobs. You're not allowed to consider things like that when you do zoning. We don't zone based on a plan. We zone based on compatible uses. So the question you're being asked to decide was, did the planning commission make an error when they came up with their findings and their decision? And I propose to you that no error was made. They made a decision that the applicant doesn't like, and so in order to try to get that passed, they want you to think that an error was made, a decision was made. The planning commission followed the land use plan and precedent. And I'm gonna depart from what's been said here, and I'm gonna tell you that the land use plan does mean something. If the land use plan means nothing and can be ignored anytime it becomes inconvenient, then who's to say that your houses won't be next? No one in Springdale will be safe from anything if we decide to just throw away the land use plan and put things in willy-nilly, wherever we want them to be. They think, they want you to know and understand that they think they have a big fish on the hook. And you've probably been told, this will be a great thing to vote for, because think of all the prestige and all the jobs it means for Springdale. But then in the same breath, they will tell you that that's nothing certain. They haven't landed the big fish, they just have him on the hook. And so does at least one other city in northwest Arkansas. So there's no guarantee that their large project is gonna go through here. The gentleman spoke a lot about probably, and maybe, and logically, but once you rezone this property, it's rezoned. And you have to look at the most obnoxious use that could be built on there, and the closest point it comes to the residences, and understand that someone could put extruded plastics manufacturing right across the street from residences in Lynn Estates. That could happen, and that's what you have to consider. Because plans change, clients change, developments go to different places, but the results of what you do here will be permanent. Warehouses in this location are not prime, they're a bad idea. They're a bad idea because any pollution that's generated on this site, whether it's from idling trucks, extruded plastic manufacturing, or any other source, the breezes come from the west, and that pollution will wind up directly in our homes. It's a bad idea because of noise. If they're gonna build a distribution center here and have trucks idling all hours of the night, and trucks coming and going in large quantities, that's gonna generate a lot of noise. And our homes have been there for 20, 30, and 40 years, long before anybody thought about doing anything industrial in this location. There is the traffic problem. I'm confused by the idea that people want to say, well, we're gonna use Dixieland, and that's only two years away, but it's not there today. No self-respecting developer, by the way, you're being asked to approve this tonight because it's got to be done in a hurry, because if we don't do it right now, the big fish will get away. No self-respecting developer that's in that big of a hurry is gonna wait two years to start construction on the largest building in Springdale. That construction traffic is going to use Apple Blossom Road, because that's the only way they can get there, and they will tear Apple Blossom Road up. We have told you 11 years ago, and repeatedly since then, that Apple Blossom will not take the traffic from large developments on this site. And to date, nothing has been done to Apple Blossom. Nothing. Graham Road is 16 feet wide in places, and is also too thin and too narrow and windy to be passable for construction traffic. The applicant will probably tell you, he did tell the planning commission, this is the only place in Springdale this can go. There's no other place in Springdale that's suitable for this. I spent five minutes on the internet, found a piece of property half a mile away that's about this size and shape, that has direct access to 71B and to the railroad, that has nine surrounding landowners, six of which will be cut off from the property by the 412 bypass, if it's ever built. And the property sits on the interchange, so that trucks would have direct access through Highway 71 onto the interchange, nothing on city streets. I did that in five minutes on the internet. I can't believe that there's no other place in Springdale that this could be built. It just doesn't make any sense. There's industrial land all over Springdale, and most of it has better access than this. The planning commission relied on, somewhat on precedent, I think. We asked them to consider that. 11 years ago, the city council declined to rezone this property to warehouse use. Warehouse use. And people say, well, you're gonna get up and speak against anything going on here. We know this property's gonna develop. We're not asking for this property not to develop, but we're asking it to be developed responsibly. And I personally am asking for it to be developed into something besides warehouses. 11 years ago, I stood right here and spoke against warehouses on that site. Eight years ago, I think it was, the applicant came in and said, we're gonna build a private high school on this site. And I came to the planning commission and said, it's only fair, since I spoke against the other, that I speak in favor of this, because I think it's a great idea. I'm not opposed to developing the site. I'm opposed to warehouses. Three years ago, when the planning commission decided to zone this property as a C-2, I asked them to reconsider and zone to C-1, because C-2 allows warehouses as a conditional use. And this property, in my opinion, is not appropriate for warehouses. Tonight, we're back again, warehouses, warehouses, warehouses. This is not the right place for that. The planning commission declined to grant industrial zoning to a piece of property adjacent to the 412 bypass, across the road now from the Shaw Elementary School and the legendary subdivision. They also wanted to do plastics manufacturing, and they were told it was too close to the neighboring, to the school and to the residents to do that, even though it was right adjacent to Highway 412. McGar RV is about a mile from this, off to the southwest. Their rezoning was denied. They wanted to do commercial zoning on that site. They've been doing business there since wagon wheel road was two-lanes, and since the neighboring, long before the neighboring subdivision was platted. But the residents of that subdivision felt, these are their words, not mine, that the master land use plan saying that would all be low-density residential was a promise made by the city of Springdale. And partly on that basis, McGar RV was not allowed to do, have commercial zoning, to do exactly what they're still doing there now. The applicant makes a big deal about the buffer, and on paper, that looks good. We were in this room 11 years ago, when the applicant's member of the family that owns the property promised us a 300-foot buffer between our homes and the adjoining development. And then he went right over there in that corner and told Kerm Radio, well, we'll take what we can get tonight, and then we'll come back and get what we want later. I don't have any confidence that that 300-foot buffer's gonna stay. If I had some confidence, it might not be worth speaking to you tonight. But we don't have any confidence. So we don't know what's going there, we can't know what's going there. Anything could be done. The planning commission did their job to protect the residents and to promote reasonable and responsible growth in the city of Springdale. Industrial use on this property may be the highest use of the property, but it's not the best. And if the test was purely highest, then anybody could do industrial anywhere they wanted to. Every piece of property could be industrial, because that's the highest use, but it's not always the best use. In short, the planning commission, in my opinion, made a decision, not an error. And I would ask you to let them do their jobs, to trust their judgment, and to treat this the same way, and offer us the same protections you would want if this was your home. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Who's next?
I'm Lynn Steele. I live at 5532 Walden Street. And I got my hair and a tie up and my mask. I'll just make a comment about Apple Blossom not being upgraded. Apple Blossom collapsed, a portion of it, while they were working on Dixieland Extension. And they had to come in, or Springdale had to come in and repair it. So that goes right along with what David was saying. Apple Blossom will not handle truck traffic. And like he said, we went down this road three years ago, or four years ago, and here we are again. So I ask you all to turn them down again, because this is not good for our neighborhood, and it just won't work, like David said. So, Apple Blossom will not hold up the traffic at all.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Bruce Miller. I live at 5586 Walden Street. Lived on Walden Street for almost 30 years.
Hey, Bruce, I should have asked the, I'm sorry, sir, I should have asked you before. In relation to where you live on Walden, are you directly east of the zone, of the C-2 that's being proposed now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're in that section of Walden?
Yes.
Okay.
So I've lived there for about 30 years, and been completely blessed to be able to look out across that pasture for this amount of time. And I'm like David, I'm not against people developing their land, but we have extruded plastic factory here in this town. Would anybody want to live next to that? We all know where it is. Reiterate, reiterate what Lynn said about Apple Blossom. It's overtaxed now. JB Hunt has expanded Silent Grove. You come in there at 5:00 in the afternoon, there's traffic backed up for a half a mile. Same thing with access off of Apple Blossom onto 71B. It's too small of a road. Graham Road, it's not an option, as far as I'm concerned. So, again, I agree with everything that Lynn and David have said. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone else? I'll say, I'll say one thing, and to speak specifically to a point that David made. And I can only speak of my, you know, if you all know the process and the law, state law, there's very few opportunities for a mayor to vote. But I can assure you that if that opportunity comes to me, my vote will be based on what I believe is best for this property. It won't be, it won't be based on a, on a big fish, or an opportunity that we may or, that may or may not play out. So I just, I just needed to make that, get that on the record. And, and so, anyway. And we do have I-1 zoning adjacent to residential. And I don't believe it has a commercial buffer like this proposed to have. Out on Kendrick Avenue, we have I-1 zoning directly across the street, across Kendrick, from residential, in the former, formerly Bethel Heights. So I just wanted to make that point, that this isn't, this isn't something that...
Thank you for clarifying that. If I can make just one more statement that I forgot to make. The gentleman said that the property across the street in Lowell is zoned commercial and planned office. It is actually zoned low-density residential and planned office. So there's a little bit of a difference there. Also, I wondered, I know there are several of the neighbors here who don't want to speak, but if you might ask who in the audience is opposed to the project, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, we'll do that. Be glad to do that.
David, David, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
If you wouldn't mind, help me with the history, 'cause I was remembering the one 11 years ago, when Joe Brooks was here, and you were here and spoke a lot.
Yes, sir.
And there was a lot of neighbors there then, 11 years ago, as well. I'm not remembering what happened three years ago, though.
Three years ago, and I was not able to attend that council meeting. I had a conflict. Basically, I had to help make sure that a city's sewer system didn't fail, and it wasn't Bethel Heights. So I was not able to speak at that meeting. But three years ago, this property was zoned to C-2 from A-1. And at that meeting, I did ask that the, the planning commission meeting, I did ask that they consider a C-1 zoning instead of a C-2. And that really didn't get any consideration.
And 11 years ago, it's basically the same request that we have tonight?
11 years ago, they were requesting a W-1 zoning on the whole property. Now, that will include the area that shows as subject to rezone, and the three pieces that say Zone C-2. The actual, and I don't want to confuse the issue, and please forgive me if I do, the request appears to be to rezone about 85 acres. The overall property is listed on a sign on the property as being approximately 130 acres.
That includes those two little pieces to the north?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying?
It does.
Okay.
And again, we've, we've talked about buffers, and I will concede that the buffer makes a huge difference. I just have no confidence that it's gonna stay. And I've even suggested that perhaps they write a covenant to go with the land, and was promptly told that that's not allowed to be considered in rezoning, so...
Well, 11 years ago, so they proposed the buffer then, and it seemed like there was a lot of discussion then, also about fencing and all kinds of things that were brought up at that meeting.
I think some of those issues with regard to fencing may be taken care of by the construction of Dixieland Road. Mr. Baldwin has been...
So actually, it's a little bit more of a buffer this time than it was 11 years ago, because Dixieland's gonna be how wide, you know?
I don't know.
How much?
120.
120 feet?
That number, I won't argue with that number, but I'm told it's more like 90, not 120. But that 30 feet's not a huge deal either way. Again, the buffer's a great deal if it stays, but you can't make it stay. They can come back in next month and say, well, now we want the 300-foot buffer to be zoned industrial, too, and you have to do it, because we're gonna do warehouses here, we gotta do them here. I don't know where it stops. And again, the statement, we'll take what we can get tonight, and then we'll come back and get what we want later, is huge. I don't generally mistrust people. I'm often skeptical, but it's not often that I say, I really have a problem trusting what I'm being told. But once you hear a statement like that being made, you have to kind of take the, take the people at their word and say, they've told us this is what they're gonna do.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm most concerned about an I-1 rezoning. About a lot about the plastics. Warehouses. Why didn't you go for a warehouse?
So, I'll go ahead and state, I'm not an engineer, so I, I can't point to the specifics. It could have to do with setbacks or dimensional requirements that are allowed under I-1, I'm not quite sure.
Did you not tell us Mr. McClard is here this evening?
Yes. Do you have an answer for that, Bill?
I'm sorry, Mr. Jay Cobb, what was the question?
The question was, what I hear a lot of tonight is, you know, the I-1 ask for rezoning. And if you're planning on warehouses, why did you not consider a warehouse zoning? Lay some of these fears and concerns.
Well, first of all, the way I read the I-1 zoning, you couldn't do a plastic injections plan here, anyway. It's not, it's not allowed. you couldn't do a plastic injections plan here anyway. It's not, it's not allowed. There's talk about plastics, plastics, that's, that's not allowed in here. But, but, but to, but to your point, if you would feel more comfortable with it being IW, we can live with that. We'll be glad to change our request to be IW.
It'd be W1.
W1, pardon, W1. W1. And I'm Bill McLeod, and I, it's a pleasure to be here. It's been a long time since I've been in front of you guys. I'd like to point out that that buffer up there, the only way that buffer could go away is to come back through a complete zoning again and have everybody talk about it again. It's just not going to magically go away, and staff cannot wave a magic wand and make it go away. It's there, and unless somebody, I can't imagine what it would be to change it because actually, C2 is probably the highest best use right along Dixieland. At some point, it should be commercial and would be much more valuable that way.
I wouldn't disagree with you there.
You would, okay. You would agree with him? Okay. But, but I don't think you could, and I don't think you could put plastic injection there, but if you would feel more comfortable, and members of the board would feel more comfortable with IW, we can live with that, and we can still do the projects we want to do, and we can still build warehouses. I think that's fine.
So what would it take, Patsy, now for them to change that to a W1?
I, I have a question for Patsy first. Patsy, is the setback, isn't the industrial setback wider than the warehouse setback?
Well, the industrial, if it has parking between the street and the right-of-way, it's a fifty-foot setback, same thing for commercial. It's the same kind of setbacks. It's a twenty-five-foot rear. It's thirty on this side, it's adjacent to residential. There's not a lot of difference in the setbacks between the two different zoning classifications.
Okay, I was, I was thinking about the old zoning before, I guess, because there was a, there was quite a bit of difference between the setback on industrial than, and then...
Well, an I-1, I didn't look at I-2 because they haven't asked for I-2.
Yeah.
To answer your question about downgrading it to a W1, that would be allowed if they want to make that request to downgrade it to a W1. You can't go up, but you can go down. Yes.
You can go, so if you, if you went up, it would have to go back to Planning Commission?
It would have to go back to Planning Commission.
If you go down, the council can, can make that decision if they want to.
And our, our ordinances are structured with a hierarchy of the different types of uses, and a W1 is a less industrial use than an I-1.
Mr. McLeod was saying that they would be, your clients would be willing to accept a W1 zoning?
Yes, sir. We're just looking for warehouse and distribution, and nobody wants to do plastics or aluminum injection or anything like that. I don't, for, for one thing, it's, it's hard to even get those jobs anymore. But, no, I think we're fine with, with I-W.
W1.
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 You've been going to many, too many of those foreign cities on their zoning.
Before we do that, Will is authorized to represent the applicant. You would have to make the request to downgrade it to W1.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear a word you said.
I said, Will is authorized to represent the applicant. Bill is just answering questions. He has to make the request to downgrade it to W1, not Bill. And we, that's technicalities, but we know who's authorized to represent him. Okay?
David, we really want to hear what you have to say.
You're working on the assumption that we object to industrial, we object to warehouses.
So...
If, if this plays out that way, David, y'all will have an opportunity to speak to it, so...
So I, I'd like to address a couple of things that were said while I was sitting down a second ago. Mr. Gilbert says quite a bit when he gets up here, so I'm going to try to keep it to the high points. He, he said that you guys are being asked to treat Walden Street like it's nothing of consequence. That, that's simply not true. We've asked for a C2 buffer. That's three hundred feet. And actually, for the vast majority of Wall Street, or Walden Street, you'll see that it's zoned C2 on that other portion. That's an eleven-hundred-foot-wide parcel of C2. To bolster what Bill just said, we can't, we can't just magically get rid of that C2. We got to get up here and ask about it again, and the public will have a chance to comment on it. And as I said previously, this is how you, this is how you plan cities. You put commercial in between and industrial. You, you take conflicting uses and you put more compatible uses in between them. In all reality, what the residents of Walden Street are looking at is they're looking at something like a strip center behind them. And then behind that, possibly a warehousing use. But they're going to have to look over their fences and over a retail center or whatever might be there to even see what's going on over there, let alone hear it. So I, I think to say that this is poor zoning is, is really just a broad generalization. A lot of this parcel, it's going to be I-1 or potentially double, W1, I'll get to that in a second, is, is a far distance from Walden. There's a lot in between them. Mr. Gilbert at the previous meeting and tonight brought up, "Why aren't we looking at other parcels?" Because we're, we're not looking at other parcels right here. We're looking at rezoning this parcel. We don't know what other parcels are for sale. We don't know, there's, we don't know. I think utilities came into play here. I think that the, the buyer is particularly interested in the fact that this lot is flat and has utilities already. Another point, the Planning Commission and the City Council do not rely on precedent. They're not the Circuit Court. You guys are not bound by your previous decisions. There's no star A decisis. You guys can decide on a case-by-case basis. Now, to a certain extent, the City Council and Planning Commission is supposed to zone things in a way that's compatible. That way, that can be affected by previous decisions, but in no way are you guys bound by previous decisions. If, if warehousing got denied here previously, you don't have to deny it today. And to that effect, if people keep coming here trying to put warehouses here, that, developers trying to put warehouses here, to me, that speaks to the fact that maybe this is a good spot for warehouses, from a business standpoint, and from a zoning standpoint, too. Apple Blossom, again, was brought up. I understand what condition Apple Blossom is and how wide it is right now. But also, as we all know, a large majority of Apple Blossom used to be in Bethel Heights. The city is in a much better position now to upgrade Apple Blossom as it sees fit, to fit development that comes in. It's very rare that infrastructure comes before the developments, too. In, in typical cases, the cities have to adjust this. You see this all the time. You get a higher concentration of residential on a certain road, they got to get to work. You got to widen the road to adjust for that. I mean, this is how infrastructure in cities is built. It's very rare that it happens the other way around, except in certain planned development districts. And so, just as a, as a general matter, I don't, as a general matter, I don't think that, I think that the, the proximity of this industrial use to Walden Street is, is being overblown. I think you've got three hundred feet with the buffer, and I think that on the other portion of that eastern side is a thousand feet of buffer, four football fields. So with that, I'm, I'm here to have any, I'm here to answer any questions. I think Bill already said that we'd be fine with a W1 zoning, so I...
But, but you heard her say, Bill doesn't have the right to say that. It has to come from you.
Oh, it, it will come from me. So with that, I'd like to request that we downzone this to a W1. And in the event that it would be approved, we would like the ordinance to be adopted tonight. And I believe you guys have a copy of that.
I believe we would go there, we need to stay on the desk. And I don't agree with you, like you said, basically, we give the road, and then we start to kind of layer that, that's what I'm saying. Six Springdale has, has been made of, on program. We want to have infrastructure replaced, and we can draw on the, the best uses for the city. And without any, I can't see, I would say that this is the best use for that. You don't have this land in progress, I believe. Looks like Dixieland comes, that is land that we could use for residential, where we have to. We get a tax revenue, we have to. It could be, or we're getting tax revenue off of, or... What we get off of, there is so many people that have this and this, or this, or this. Are they on the industry that, um, do that, do that block? Or we didn't actually get off? Highway 265, there is a area that's already zoned up. There's a big sign out there, six percent. So I know there's enough places here. Do you have a preference? Yep. Six twelve, all the way up to, two sixty-five, there's a, I just don't know. We don't even know when it's going to be built here. So, don't have this. We've got roads that can't handle the construction. We're hoping Dixieland gets built. We have no idea what two years is going to happen in two years. If you go south, and this not get built, so we're going on assumption that this is the best place for the construction, I don't believe. We have places in Springdale that have great accesses, infrastructure in place, utilities in place. But apparently, the river is doing this, doesn't want to look up there, it just want to here. One, if you hear, it's so bad, what I'm looking for. So the question, really, really, this is, this is...
Brian, I, I'm just going to interject for a minute, just because I don't think, I don't think that industrial area over there has anything near this eighty-five acre size. Yeah, so I, I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up. I'm saying, the public facilities board land, I don't believe, Pat, Patsy, I don't believe it's, I don't have, I don't think they have a track that big. I just wanted to bring that up.
So, I want to be big enough, I want, we have industrial land. But I, I can't vote for this on something that think that will happen. Two years. So, I know what you're saying, I know you want your representative, you have to monitor. But you have to have infrastructure. You got to have, you can't have this for a residential. I'm not going to vote this on what happens in two years. I don't want to sit here and say, well, we're going to resign it to W1, place off of one. I just want, just want to keep that in mind. There are other uses for this. I see what you're putting, that's right, and that's what we did with the structure. Trying to give it, just make sure it catch revenue.
So Doug, would you mind speaking to Dixieland?
Dixieland is under design, ninety percent plans. It is definitely high on, I think, high on this council's priority list. It has been long before talk of this rezoning because it's another north-south route from wagon wheel all the way up through Rogers. And, and so, I think, just for my two cents, and my crystal ball is really no better than anyone else's, but, but it seems to me that if commercial's going to be on this property, it's going to be, it's going to front on Dixieland.
What is the funding situation for Dixieland?
The what?
Funding?
Street bond. Street bond. So, you know, we have every intention of, of building Dixieland. I can't imagine, and, and I would imagine, depending on what happens with this rezoning and development, we might push it ahead of something else. You know, that's all dependent, things change. And, and something else that has changed, since this was all discussed several years ago, David, now I don't know, I don't know if we knew this, we, we had an idea. We had a, we had a line on a map that, that six twelve was going to run through this area. But, but those plans are much firmer now. We don't know, we don't know when it'll happen. I think it'll depend a lot on this vote in November. But, but whether it's, whether it's three to five years, or whether it's eight to ten years, I think is going to depend on this vote in November, as far as six twelve. But, but they, this, they know for this zoning that it's going to have to, this, this, if there is a development, then the, it'll be dealt with again in large scale, but it's going to have to front on, it's going to have to access off of, off of the new Dixieland. And I believe we could build Dixieland as quickly as anybody could develop this property, given, given where we're at right now in the process. Sure. And you're Lynn, right?
Right.
Okay.
If this gentleman needs warehouses, I just drove down the street, this three-quarters of a mile from this property, and there's empty warehouses sitting on that street.
Right.
And this map I just printed off this morning still shows six twelve coming right through that property. Right through. There's a pond, see that pond up there? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it comes through the southwest corner.
Yeah, coming right through that property. So who, who would want to put all the infrastructure in and build warehouses and then have a major highway come through there and take it out? That's just my question.
Well, that's not, that's not really my problem or anyone up here. That's up to the developer. So you have given, you've let the council know that if someone wants to make a motion for W1, then you would, you'd be acceptable to that?
Yes.
Okay. Bill, go ahead, say what you want to say, and then I'm going to give the residents an opportunity to speak.
Let me reiterate. This developer has done a lot of projects, several within a mile of here, and they know that road's coming, and there's no way that they're going to build anything anywhere close to where that road's coming because they don't want to have to tear it down anymore than we want the state to tear it down.
Right.
We know those plans, and everything will be designed around that. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
As far as the I-1 uses permitted, an I-1 zone, according to Springdale's district regulations, include Unit 25, which is limited manufacturing. Unit 25, limited manufacturing, is listed in the code of ordinances as including extruded plastics manufacturing. So when you say nobody's going to do plastics on that site, if you rezon this to I-1, you've given them permission to do extruded plastics on that site. You can say, "Nobody's going to do it," but you don't know that, and you will give them permission to do it. We used to run into a deal that we jokingly referred to as the strip club conundrum, where we'd come in and want to do a certain zoning to do a particular project. Maybe it was a big box, maybe it was something else. And somebody from the neighborhood would always come in and say, "Well, if you rezon it to that, they can do a strip club." And we'd say, "Well, we're not going to do a strip club. We're going to do something nice, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that." Yes, we would be told from the bench by the Planning Commission, "Once it's rezoned, you may go away. The property may be sold to somebody else. We don't have any guarantee that because you want to do something nice, that something nice is going to be built there. Once you rezon it, they could build a strip club on it." And I've been turned down more than once, just on that basis. So it's not, again, the question is not, "What does the developer intend?" Because at the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant himself said, "This deal's not certain. It could fall through." And he's being honest, and I appreciate that, but that's the reality of it. The development could fall through. Then you're left with the most obnoxious use permissible under your ordinances.
Let me give you an opportunity while you're up there.
Yes, sir.
You might want to, you might switch your, give us your thoughts about, if you're, if you object to W1, what those would be.
We, we've objected to W1 for eleven years. Every time this property comes to any body of the city of Springdale, we've objected to warehouses on this site. By, the simplest answer is that if you go through enough of the codes, in almost every single industrial-type use, including W1, there are provisions of W1, I think the one, the most, the one that caught my eye was plastics recycling. Well, at the time, the applicant owned a plastics recycling company that recycled plastics and melted it down and occasionally... Well, at the time, the applicant owned a plastics recycling company that recycled plastics and melted it down, and occasionally caught on fire. And we didn't think that was a good fit for the neighborhood, to have melting plastics and all of that in the neighborhood. So our objections really have been pretty consistent. The applicant's requests have really been pretty consistent, and that is, let me build warehouses on this site, but I'm not gonna tell you what can be done, we're just gonna get warehouses done, and then we'll do what we want later. Kinda you have to pass the bill to know what's in the bill? That's kinda what we're looking at here. And that's the nature of zoning, and that's why you can't, we don't consider the plan when we rezon. We consider the plan after rezoning, because if we're gonna do something obnoxious, it might not come up tonight. Plans fall through. So, I mean, that's, that's our status on that. The neighbors have, and I'm not speaking for the neighborhood, but I'm speaking from my recollection, and you may remember this too, the neighbors, when this was asked to be zoned W one eleven years ago, said, no, that's a bad use. Now, you know, we talk about apple blossom and traffic in Dixie Land, again, I wanna remind you that construction traffic is gonna have to use apple blossom, because Dixie Land won't be done. So that's, that's a real concern. But no, we, you know, what you, what you do tonight is permanent, and when the deal falls through, we're stuck with it. So we're just asking you to do what zoning is intended for, and in this case, to uphold the planning commission's decision, because you, you brought them on board. You think they're intelligent people, or you would not have appointed them to the planning commission. We're just asking you to let them do their jobs and protect us from what we see as incompatible development.
All right. Somebody else?
Neighbor need to raise their hand.
Oh, thank you. If you are here, if you're a, if you're here to oppose the rezoning, just slip up your hand so the council can see. Okay? Thank you. All right, let the record show that most of our, most of our, uh, public that's attending the meeting night is here in opposition to this rezoning. All right. Yeah, I understand, and we, we do that because we were asked to. I don't, honestly, for me, anyway, we'll just move on. But Ernest, tell us the options before the council, before anything else could be done, if they wanna do something else.
Sure, there could be several different ways it could go. They could not have a motion at all, in which case the planning commission's denial of the rezoning as, as I one would be upheld. Or you could make a motion to overturn the planning commission's denial of the I one, and then consider their downgraded request of W one as a separate.
Okay, go ahead. So, so if the council, if the council chooses to, uh...
He wanted to give them an up or down vote on the W one, it would take overturning the planning commission first, then he could vote up or down on W one.
But they could overturn the planning commission if they choose to do that, and then decide on what they wanna do with the zoning?
Yep.
Okay, in a separate.
They could give them an up or down vote on the W one if they wanted to. Cause I, my understanding is that they've agreed to downgrade it from I one to W one, so, but we don't get to that unless...
Right.
I have another question now. Patsy, you're gonna have to probably answer this for me. It is all C two right now, right? What's allowed, is warehousing allowed in C two? Yeah.
Permitted uses in a C two zone are as follows, as soon as I get to it. Cultural recreational and health facilities, office studios and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, automotive services, parking lots, temporary buildings, transportation services, healthcare clinic, and an outdoor, indoor flea market, conditional uses or utility facilities, recycling collection facilities, self-supporting tower or antenna structure, or monopole, auction houses, temporary classrooms, automobile sales, church synagogue, mobile vending, and commercial assembly.
Well, I happen to believe that every property owner has a right to request zoning on a piece of property they, they own for, they have, they have a right to make a request and bring it before us. And I think, at this point, I would be, I would be interested in, in allowing the property owners to explore the possibility of W one zoning. So I would make the motion first, as a first step, to overturn the planning commission's denial of any zoning on this.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. I don't know if your mic's on, Amelia, that, you were very quiet when you did that, but I, but I read your lips. We do have a motion.
I believe she's quiet.
Yeah, we do have a motion and a second. Uh, this is to overturn the denial.
Correct.
Correct, of the planning commission. We'll give, we'll give everyone an opportunity to speak, David.
I have a question on this motion. If this motion is approved, is the property zoned I one, or is there other discussion?
No. Okay, everyone clear on the motion? And the second? All right, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell? Jay Cox?
Yes.
Carry seven one. So the decision of the planning commission is overturned, so given that the petitioner's agreed to a downgrade of the zoning request from an I one to a W one, it would now be, uh, you would now be in the position to consider an ordinance, but...
But we would need to add it?
Need to add it to the agenda, and then you also would have to consider waiving the three readings and reading by title only, before you...
Can that be done in one motion?
I would, I would prefer if, if in fact we voted to change the zoning, I would, I would prefer we bring it back at the next council meeting rather than, than ordinance tonight, but that's just a thought. That's not, if...
Have that option. I don't think that's what the petitioner's requesting.
That's not what the petitioner's requesting.
I think we're, uh, we're ready to proceed tonight if that's the council's wish.
Oh, okay, well, I would, I'll make the motion to rezon this particular piece of property to W one.
We're gonna have to add it to the agenda first.
Remember going through all these steps, all the downgrading?
No, before...
We've always just done it in one, one vote?
One motion, one motion.
You've actually done it both ways? You've actually done it at the same meeting with an ordinance, and you've actually done it at the, where we brought an ordinance back at the next meeting? We've actually done it both ways, you've actually done it, the most common method that we've used is we bring an ordinance back at the next meeting, actually rezoning the property because it was not on the agenda. And obviously, we don't wanna place it on the agenda, because obviously, it gives the impression of what we think the outcome's going to be, so that's why it's not placed on the agenda.
But to Jeff's point, what we've done in the past is that we've, we've gone ahead, instead of putting it on the agenda, we've gone ahead and taken a motion to change the zoning and, and voted on it.
Downgrade. With the downgrade.
That's correct.
I don't believe on, I don't believe we've done that on an appeal, though.
Uh, I believe we have, too.
I think we've done it one time on an appeal, but this is the first time in a long time that the applicant is requesting that the ordinance be done tonight. We haven't had anybody in a while ask for it all to be done the same night.
I wasn't addressing about the ordinance, I was saying that to Jeff's point about the fact that instead of putting the request for rezoning, having a vote to put it on the agenda in the past, we've simply voted for the downgrade. And then it would have to address the ordinance.
See, I might not, I, I really might not have wanted to vote for that overturning the planning commission if I didn't think it was gonna be voted for W one.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I mean, that's, I'm just trying to make sure procedurally we get to that point, and normally when we have a downgrade... Normally, when we have a downgrade, it's when they're standing in front of you, and you've got a recommendation from the planning commission to rezon it to say I one, and for whatever reason, you request that they downgrade it, and you vote on it that same night. Having an appeal with a downgrade is something that I don't know that we've ever seen before.
I only remember one time that this happened in the last twenty-four years.
Now, you've overturned the planning commission before, and we, we've brought an ordinance forward.
Separate, yeah.
Usually at the next meeting, but we can do it at the same meeting.
So what do we need to do?
Well, a motion to add to the agenda, I just wanna make sure procedurally that we do...
Okay, to placate our city attorney, I make the motion to add the W one rezoning to the agenda.
Ordinance, is that, he's adding the ordinance, is that what it is?
Yes. Is an ordinance. Rezoning requires an ordinance.
So even though we don't have the ordinance in front of us?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to add the ordinance to the agenda. Any other comment or questions?
Would it be stipulated that this would be the first reading?
That's a separate motion.
Oh, pardon.
That'll be a separate motion. Okay?
I, I guess I just wanted to confirm, since we don't have the ordinance where we can look at it, the ordinance says W one...
It has just been changed to W one.
On everything except that three hundred feet on the east side, which is...
C two.
Really not even being, that's not even being changed.
Everything that was going to be, that was originally proposed to be zoned to I one would be downgraded to W one.
We can pass this out, can't we?
We can pass it out, but the only thing that's changed is the classification requested.
I one to W one.
Need a vote to put it on the, on the, on the...
All right, roll call.
Watson? Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell? Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carry seven one. All right, now, we do have an ordinance that's been added to the agenda, however, when you passed your procedural motions earlier to read all the ordinances, uh, by title only and to waive the three reading, this was not on the agenda, so it would require a, a motion, it has to be passed by two-thirds vote to...
Basically...
Waive the three reading and read it by title only.
So basically, it's the procedural motions again for this ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, I'd entertain that motion.
Which if it had been on the agenda originally, we would have done on the Friday.
It would have been covered when we did it.
Well, you need to read, let's see. So we...
A motion to...
How to do it?
A motion to, the ordinance that was just added to the agenda, to waive the three reading requirement and to allow it to be read by title only, which is what you've done with all the other ordinances on the agenda.
Basically, options A and B for this, for this ordinance.
Only difference was because it wasn't on the agenda originally, would have been done then.
I move the ordinance to be placed on its first reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Denise, when you're ready.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell? Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance, an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from general commercial district C two to warehouse district W one, and declaring an emergency.
I move the rules to be further suspended and the ordinance be placed on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell? Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from general commercial district C two to warehouse district W one, and declaring an emergency.
Again, move the rules to be further suspended, ordinance be placed on its third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further questions or discussion?
Title only, I'm sorry, by title only.
Gotcha. Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell? Jay Cox? Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Third reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from general commercial district C two to warehouse district W one, and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other discussion, and I'm gonna give you all a chance to, any other discussion? Anyone in the room? All right, Denise?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell? Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ordinance carries seven one, and has an emergency clause. Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second, but I thought we just did that.
Oh, that was just the ordinance.
Did you second?
I did.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the emergency clause.
Powell? Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven one, thank you for letting us go around the track three times there.
All right.
Carry seven one.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. All right, we'll move on to item nine, planning commissions and report and recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
This is our first subdivision, and it was part of Bethel Heights, it had been going through the review process. Preliminary plat was approved, they finished the, the improvements, our staff has inspected it, and we're ready to move it forward with the final plat. The title of the ordinance reads, an ordinance accepting the final plat of Spring Meadows subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
We need your deep pass.
Second.
Okay, further discussion or questions? Anyone? Anyone in the audience? Anyone left in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
All right, item ten, ordinance committee chairman Mike Overton, Mike?
Well, mayor, in spite of being deprived of my enlightened leadership on, for the ordinance committee, they did find enough direction to forward two ordinances to the council for recommendation for approval. The first one is an ordinance to waive competitive, competitive bidding for the purchase of employee insurance coverage.
All right, oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Kathy made a motion?
I did.
I stepped all over you, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
And Rick seconded, any questions on this? Just so our folks know, watching this, this is, uh, uh, good news. And you know, we're, we're always just thrilled if our insurance coverage doesn't go up. And we're actually, our employees are gonna see a five percent decrease this year on our, on our health insurance, which is a, which is a wonderful thing, so, uh... Anyway, we've got a motion and a second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell? Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell? Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance and emergency clause, carry eight zero.
Uh, the next ordinance is an, uh, ordinance calling for the annexation of land pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash forty dash five oh one. And this is a series of, of parcels that are islands... The next ordinance is an ordinance calling for the annexation of land pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 14-40-501. And this is a series of parcels that are islands that are surrounded by the city of Springdale and bordered by county line on the south and Morris Avenue on the north. Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance, any further discussion or questions? All right, Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
No.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?